Honorable members of the City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and by the authority vested in me, as the Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, May 9, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. City Council Chamber, Building 1, Second Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special session is to allow the City Council to consider the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 Resource Management Plan, operating budget, capital improvement budget, program budget, and related ordinances as listed in the published agenda. Citizens may contact, may comment either in person or virtually. If you would like to speak in person, please call the City Clerk’s office at 757-385-4303 to sign up. If you wish to make comments, register at the appropriate website listed and/or register at the City Clerk’s office by calling 757-385-4303 or via email at abarns@vbgov.com prior to 5:00 p.m. on May 9, 2023. This formal session will be streamed live on www.vbgov.com and Facebook Live and will be recorded for rebroadcast on cable TV. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the meeting, you know, at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer, Mayor. Okay? So, we’re going to go forward with the business at hand, and we’re going to call this meeting to order. And then, we’re going to, how’s the roll call looking here?
Mayor, all present, and I need to note that Councilmember Rouse is participating remotely from Rome, Italy, as permitted by the City Council Remote Participation Policy. Councilmember Rouse, could you just acknowledge that you’re online?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you so much, yes.
Okay, we have a consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some disclosures?
Yes, I’m an employee of the Sheriff’s Office, and I have a disclosure letter on file with the Clerk’s Office.
Okay, Rosemary?
Yes, I have a disclosure that, because I have some personal interests with Dominion Energy, and there is part of the Atlantic Park Project has some involvement with that, I need to disclose that, but because I’m part of a group, it’s determined that I can participate. And also, just want to make sure everybody knows that I did not participate in discussions. I did not have any discussion with the Dominion Energy Project.
Okay, okay, Mr., oh, okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to disclose that I have an ownership interest in two businesses that are tenants in Town Center, the first being Town Center Office Suites LLC, and my law office, Joshua F. Schulman, P.C., and I filed a disclosure letter with the City Clerk.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Hi, this is Jen. Can y’all hear me?
Yeah, there we go, yep.
Okay, I want to disclose that I’m an employee at Tidewater Community College, and I have filed a disclosure letter with the City Clerk.
Oh, thank you, Jen, appreciate it. Okay, anyone else?
Yes, this is Dr. Ross Hammond, and I want to disclose that I am a founder and chairman of the Virginia African American Cultural Center, but since its inception, I’m not an employee, has never been compensated. Thank you.
Okay.
And I filed a letter also with the City Clerk.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, at this time, I will read the actual, what we’re going to be talking about, but first I’m going to ask Vice Mayor Wilson to, you know, just announce a few subtle changes.
So, there’s a couple of minor changes, and they really don’t affect any of the numbers of the budget. You should all have something that looks like this flagged, and this was requested by Council Lady Henley to put a little bit more teeth into the money that’s given to the charitable organization and events, so that they are to give us what their budget is and how they plan on spending the money, in addition to the other things. So, that’s the change. And then, there’s one other change, and it’s on a page with a lot of numbers, and I’m going to get Kevin to come up and explain it. It’s a simple little mistake.
Yes, ma’am. Vice Mayor, Mayor, Members of Council, so included in front of you are two pieces of paper to be replaced in one of the attachments that was included and posted in your, on the agenda, more specifically, pages 106, or excuse me, 108 and 110. Whenever the attachment was being generated from the budgeting system, numbers were transposed for four projects. The total amount did not change in terms of the means of financing, the total budgeting number. It was just a dollar amount associated with both of those. The attachment in front of you does have them updated to be reflected as they were communicated throughout their entire budget process. That was presented to City Council, project detail sheets, and elsewhere within, that were correctly reported in the budget document.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. This time, I’ll go forward and read the proposal, and then we’ll have some, I believe we have a couple of speakers. Okay, so, at this point, this is the reading of the Fiscal 2023-24 Resource Management Budget. One reconciled proposal. A FY 2023-2024 Operating Budget. Item 1, Ordinance to Appropriate $3,400,000, what was that?
$3 billion.
$3 billion, oh my, $3,480,472,315, consisting of $668,454,96 in inter-fund transfers, $266,328,271 for internal service funds, and $2,546,98,548 for operation business in fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Item 2, To Ordinance to Establish the Tax Levy of Real Estate for the Fiscal Year 2024. Three, Ordinance to Establish the Tax Levy on Personal Property and Machinery and Tools for Calendar 2024. Number, item 4, Ordinance to Authorize the City Manager to Submit an Annual Funding Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, H-U-D. Okay, moving on to item 5, Ordinance to Amend City Code Sections 35 to 64 and 35 through 67 to Add Section 35-69.1 Ray Exemption of Deferral of Real Estate Taxes for Elderly and Disabled Persons. Item 6, Ordinance to Amend City Code 37-7.1 to Water Capital Recovery Fees. Item 7, Ordinance to Amend City Code Section 2-411 to Recreate Department of Emergency Management Set For the Functions Thereof. Item 8, Ordinance to Amend City Code Section 21-240 to Ray Reimbursement for Expenses Incur from Emergency Response to DUIs and Related Incidents. Item number 9, Ordinance to Amend City Code Sections 35-253 and 35-254 Ray Local Telecommunication Servants Taxes. Number 10, Ordinance to Amend City Code 31 through 39 Ray Waste Collection Fee to Increase to Waste Collection Fees for Such Services Commencing July 1 of 2023. And 11, Ordinance to Amend City Code Ray Water and Source Fees. Section B, Ordinance that Amend City Policy. Item 1, Ordinance to Repeal and Update Various City Code Sections Ray Modernize Human Resource Policies. Item C, Fiscal Year 2023 and 24 Capital Budget. Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2023 and 2024 through the Fiscal Year 2028 through 29 Capital Improvement and Appropriate the $375,640,111 Ray Fiscal Year 2023 Capital Budget Subject to Funds Being Provided from Various Sources Set For herein. Ordinance to Authorize the Issuance of General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds in Maximum Amount of $62,460,057 Ray of Various Public Facilities and General Approvements. Number 3, Ordinance to Authorize the Issuance of Stormwater Utility System Bonds in Maximum Amount of $6,399,140. Number 4, Ordinance to Authorize the Issuance of Water and Source System Revenue Bonds in the Maximum Amount of $26,300,000. And 5, Resolution Affirming the City’s Commitment to Fund the Locality, Share the Projects, and Provide Signature Authority for the Projects Under the Agreement and of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Okay, could I have a motion and a second before the speakers?
Wait, what speakers?
No, we’ll do the speakers first.
Okay, the first speaker is Diana Howard, after Ms. Howard is Elaine Fecetti.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I’m Diana Howard. I’m the Chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and please vote no on the budget. I’d like to appeal to you tonight, for those of you who reached out to me and said, “I do care. I want you to, like, do that tonight. Now’s your chance,” right? For those of you who said, “Diana, I hear you, but there is no room in the budget for tax relief. You are so wrong.” For those of you who ran for City Council because you wanted to make a difference and be the voice of those that you felt didn’t have a voice, listen to their voices now. For those of you who said, “The rest on City Council aren’t listening to me or to the people that have emailed us and spoke at City Council and asked for you to give us tax relief,” you’re right, they’re not listening to you. And thank you, Ms. Henley, for pointing out the sheer fact that we are giving money year after year to people that say they’re nonprofits, they’re definitely not a nonprofit, they have to eat at the government trough every time, every year, and we shouldn’t be doing that, right? So, and for the rest of you, you should know better. Even though you have to have a budget, or supposedly by May 15, there’s no consequences if you don’t have a budget by May 15. It’s been extended before, you can do it again. So, I’m asking you, it starts tonight, vote no on this budget. Listen to the people that are struggling to make ends meet and do the right thing. Vote no.
Thank you.
Sorry, the next speaker is Elaine Fecetti, and then Teresa Langwell.
Good evening.
Good evening. Not to be redundant, but I basically have the same message. I came before you, before, at the Convention Center, and mostly to address and to welcome the five newly elected members and the two re-elected members to the budget process, but three of you were unable to make it that night, so I’m going to bring back that same message. You, that means there were seven of you that were just on the campaign trail, that talked to citizens, that heard how they were hurting in this nation’s economy, the state’s economy, and the city’s economy. You were elected to be our voice, to work with our tax dollars on our budget, and we need you to hear our voice, because I know seven of you heard it, and five of you will hear it next year. One more tax increase like last year, and people are moving. I got five phone calls this week, people who want me to list their house. They saw the budget, they saw the agenda online, they said, “That’s it. I told you, I can’t do it anymore.” Last year, you raised it despite rhetoric to the contrary, it didn’t fool anyone. It was a double whammy last year, it’s a double whammy again this year. And I’ll tell you, for the three that missed it, and I won’t repeat it anymore, the story of my daughter, because it really is, hits home. When she was three and four, and I would sit at my desk and pay bills, she would try to read them, and every one I handed to her had the word “tax” on it, and she would go, “What is with all the taxes?” And I told her, and one day she looked at me, and she said, “What happens when we pay, spend all of our money to pay taxes and have nothing left over?” And that is where so many citizens in this city are right now. Raise them again, they’re giving up their essential services, their drugs and pharmaceuticals, their electricity, whatever. So, I implore you, please, please, remember what you heard the citizens say. This is not a surprise to you, this is not a short-term thing. Please vote no to this budget, and do not raise. The assessments have already gone up, and next year, maybe this is, maybe this is an idea for next year. Next year, could we maybe direct the city manager to create a revenue-neutral budget? And then, instead of us coming to you, begging you not to raise the taxes, you come to us and show us what needs to be added. I feel like that’s a much more transparent method for those of you that are new to the process and for the public to understand, because sometimes you do have to raise taxes. So, let us understand where this is coming from. You do have wiggle rope, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Teresa Langwell, and then Van Cat Alice Warpu.
Good evening.
Hi, a lot of people aren’t here because they’re at the school board meeting, they’re both being held the same night, so all of us activists, our attention is divided. I’m Teresa Langwell, I’m a Christian, I’m a citizen of Virginia Beach, I’m a mother of five, and I have 14 grandchildren, which is why I do what I do. I’m also a Republican and a Tea Party member. I’m here to just say, and I did send this letter to you all today, do not raise our taxes, certainly not more than 90 cents, because that makes sense. I oppose Project Wayne and find it ludicrous. There’s no words. I oppose giving taxpayer monies to nonprofit organizations unless you give to every single one of them in the city, which is impossible, of course. I reserve the right to spend my money on nonprofit organizations of my choice and from my own heart. Though it appears legal, I believe that it, I believe it to be against the spirit of my constitutional rights. I also oppose private-public contracts, given that I see one costly mishap after the other. Collecting taxes in itself is not right, and only has been instituted because the United States became a corporation. We all know that there are gray lines about spending, but when monies are spent on frivolous things such as trips to South Carolina and very expensive hotels, that smacks of let-the-meet-cake, a let-the-meet-cake sort of mentality, especially when the needs of the city seem to take a second seat, such as teachers, et cetera, to big developers’ dreams and pockets. It is immoral what I see going on, and we all know it. All citizens are seeing increases in their monthly bills and are seeing their individual rights under attack, especially the First and Second Amendments. One would think that at least at the local level, that our representatives on the City Council and School Board would be more apathetic. And that doesn’t mean creating more handouts, it means cutting spending. Stop spending and readjust the budget to needs and not wants. Crony capitalism is ugly, and it stinks. And as for Project Wayne, that is environmentally insane and will change Virginia Beach for the worst and forever. All citizens can agree with that. Keep the green line where it is, I don’t think there are any more late gastons to steal from. And lastly, the destruction from turbines in the ocean water to make those that manufacture the windmills rich is not right. It’s wrong. We have to protect our oceans. Government screams for money for climate change, and in the same breath, that same sordid group of people scream to pollute our ocean, causing the death of so much marine life.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Please cease the lunacy. Thank you.
The next speaker is Van Cat Alice Warpu, and then Laura Hughes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, good evening to all, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and listening to me. I urge all of you to vote against this budget. I think there’s a considerable scope for reducing the expenses, and I did a detailed analysis of the employee city count, and I sent that email to you guys, to all of you last week, and I hope you saw it. And out of more than 15 cities I compared, Virginia Beach had the highest city employee count per thousand population. So, we, obviously, there’s, we had, there’s a lot of city employees there, and there’s a lot of scope to reduce the city count, employee count, and reduce our expenses, because our property taxes are very high and are going up, and for a lot of people who are coming here to retire, this is not going to be a good city. So, I urge you to cut the expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The last speaker is Laura Hughes. I do not see her in the audience, so that’s all the speakers, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I’d like to move for approval on the reconciled proposal. A, the FY 2023-24 Operating Budget. B, the ordinance to amend the city policy. And C, FY 2023-24 Capital Budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all of the citizens who have come out today to share their concerns about the budget. Certainly, as City Council members, we should be partners with those of the community and residents, because we are the pioneers of a city budget, and it is important that we listen to your concerns and implement those concerns. But today, I rise today to share my dissent to the city manager’s budget and the budget process. As it’s been five years that I have reviewed this process, the budget process as it is, and I’ve observed flaws in the process. And the last years, I have supported and supported the budget, showed my efforts to make sure I work with my colleagues on council to do so. But each year, doing the same thing every year, knowing there are flaws in the system, in the process, in doing so, expecting a different result, that’s the definition of insanity. That’s just not something I can support today. I cannot continue to support a budget that is not aligned with our mission of this city, to support services for residents in this city in terms of municipal services that they pay taxes for. The budget should align with the mission, and the budget should serve all of the citizens in every district across the city. My dissent, my disapproval of the budget is not against our world-class teachers and educational system, it is not against our courageous public safety members who serve tirelessly. My record shows that I am a consistent supporter of these members of our community, and I will continue to support these members of our community. However, I have to, and I am concerned about some of the things I have seen. Now, some people say, “Well, why did you wait so late to talk about this? What can you do?” I didn’t wait late. I was vocal about my dissent and disapproval of the city manager’s budget, and I worked early to talk to some of the members of leadership, and I was told that I was too early in the process. Yet, a couple of weeks before the budget had to be approved, I received a call from leadership that says, “Well, we have the majority of the support for the budget, for the city manager’s budget, and so that tells me you don’t need my support. You didn’t need it. That’s okay.” Yes, I was offered what started out as $50,000, then I heard it was $75,000, then I heard it go up to $150,000 for districts. I was offered that, but still, my vote is the same. No. And in considering that offer, I also have to consider the needs and priorities in the district where I serve. Takes way more than $150,000 to meet the priorities in District 7. And one of those is a rec center, a district rec center, that I have been advocating for for so many years. And so, unfortunately, I’m going to digress there, I’m not going to go on about that, but the needs for priorities for District 7 are important, and that district rec center is important to them. And our budget, as I mentioned, should reflect the needs of all the citizenry. So, in terms of, you’ve heard of the elephant in the room, let’s discuss all the elephants in the room, because there’s more than one. I’m going to take a moment to discuss a couple, a few. The first one is Atlantic Park, and the $17 million that was at the last minute implemented in the reconciliation process. That’s not the best way to put in such of a magnitude of a decision based on taxpayers' money. $17 million is substantial, and this is not that I have a problem with the project itself, but the $17 million upgrades that the citizens didn’t have a chance to review, talk about, provide feedback on, that’s not transparent. Now, I understand, my colleagues have said, “This is something, a project that we’ve known about, that was politicized, and we have public hearings,” that is true. I was there, I heard the support. But the details of this $17 million and closing on that deal, those are the things that needed to really be made public and needed to be transparent for the citizens. It’s important, it’s still their money, it’s still the citizens’ money. That’s elephant one. Elephant two is not having tax relief or working hard to find tax relief for the citizens who ask for it. They ask for tax relief, they ask for reduced rate in real estate taxes. I heard, had the telephone calls, I received the emails, but unfortunately, there was not enough progress made, there were not a lot of options given for that, and that’s something that we certainly could change. Thirdly, the C-TAC community, and I have to mention the C-TAC community, because every year that I’ve sat on this body, the C-TAC community has come before council asking for one thing, and that is an expanded recreational center. They pay taxes like everyone else, and they have asked to enjoy the same equitable amenities as everyone else. And every year, they come asking and seeking that resolve, and again, it’s fell on deaf ears, and that’s not right. Again, the budget should be aligned with the priorities of the whole entire district system and the community. It’s important. Now, while I do acknowledge that there was $150,000 given for a park, and that’s nice, but what they ask for is an expanded recreational facility. And last year, one of my colleagues requested, we make that a priority. Fortunately, didn’t happen, and those members and the residents said they will continue to come back year after year, asking for the same thing. Now, for me, I’m willing to work with my colleagues here to change the process, because it does need to be changed. Happy to listen and work with them to do so, but it’s going to require concerted effort. It’s going to require collaboration and working together. This is my perspective and what I have been a part of. But finally, I would ask Mr. Duhaney to work with all the members of council and their priorities. to work with all the members of council and their priorities. It's very important. Because when I'm told that, you know, the body, the majority of the body doesn't support something, and I call around and they say they have no idea what I'm talking about, that's a problem for me. We need you to help support the priorities of all the members of this body because you work for the citizens of this city. You work for all of the council members. So I ask you, please do that, sir. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Barbara?
Probably the most-
Turn on your mic.
Probably the most important action the city council takes every year is to adopt a budget. It's in this process that we decide the taxes and fees that each household will pay and how that money is going to be spent. It is our fiduciary responsibility to assure that all money collected and spent is properly vetted and accounted for. It's my concern that in this budget, we have not met that responsibility. Throughout the time leading up to the budget proposal, it's been acknowledged over and over that this would be a particularly challenging budget, given record inflation, difficulties in delivering service with supply chain issues and workforce challenges and any number of other issues. But when property assessments were issued, the difficulty was magnified. For the second straight year, we see what I believe are probably record assessment increases. The average residential property increase is at 9.7%. Using that number, I looked to see where that stood in my district, District 2. I counted 39 neighborhoods that exceed that average, several above 20%. To take it a step further, I did a rough count of all neighborhoods in the city, and I came up with 334 neighborhoods citywide that exceed the average inflation rate. Our people are going to have a challenge. We acknowledged that fact when the budget was presented, and we asked the city manager to recommend levels that we might look for to possibly give some relief. And he did. Possible reductions that would give 1, 2, 3, and 4 cents tax reductions were provided. We then asked our citizens in our citizen involvement process to look at those suggestions and give us their thoughts. Many did, and we have those reports. I've been concerned that we were not allowing enough city council time to develop this budget. Then, to use the reconciliation session, not for council discussion about how to reconcile the budget, but to receive a letter developed by individual phone calls is just going too far. We spent zero time looking at the possibility of providing relief by considering the public responses to possible reductions. There are critical issues proposed in this budget that we need to address. Teacher salary increases recommended as a result of the market salary study conducted by the system must be addressed. Public safety and security, both in the schools and throughout the city, is an ever-increasing concern that we must address. Mental health issues are also at the top of the list for more attention, and the list goes on. But we spent no time addressing the question of how we can best address these issues while at least showing concern for our taxpayers who are going to have to pay for it. I can see that there will need to be additional money, but we must show responsibility and accountability. For me, the crowning blow came in last Tuesday's meeting when the reconciliation letter accepted by the council enumerated hundreds of thousands of dollars in new allocations previously unseen by the public or the city council, made directly to non-departmental regional grants outside of the process that has been used for such allocations for well over 20 years, the Community Organization Grant Allocation Committee and the Arts and Humanities Commission. I recognized in last year's reconciliation that we were beginning to avoid that established process, and I protested that I was concerned about that action. Unfortunately, it continued throughout the year, and I voted against allowing some organizations to avoid the process that would review applications and follow up with accountability. However good they might sound, we just cannot have an established process that requires review and accountability for some organizations but allows others to go straight to a political vote. I have asked that we at least establish that the Community Organization Grant Process be required for all applicants going forward, but I have not received support for that action. I see this as a very dangerous political precipice, especially in light of the increases in taxes that we are requiring people to pay. I just cannot support the budget process we're establishing if this budget is adopted without further consideration of the issues that I have described. We have until May 15th to adopt a budget.
Okay, thank you. Hey, anyone else? Yeah, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I want to thank all the citizens who contacted me and our council by email and text and phone call and in person at the two hearings and tonight. And also Budget Director O'Shea Lay and city staffer and city manager Duhany for your help and assistance in preparing this budget. And also my colleagues in conversations with you one-on-one about different aspects of the budget. And this is never easy, and I agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman Henley. This is our most important vote. It certainly is for me in my fifth month here as a new member. Budgets are not easy. Revenues are not easy to obtain, and costs are hard to contain as well. But overall, I approve of this budget. And the reason why is that it funds basic city services that I ran on last fall as a candidate, and that's public safety, public education, and public services. Our staff, both teachers, fire, police, and our city staff are compensated fairly for a livable wage, and I support that. This budget addresses that. No, this budget does not address the members of the CTAC community and their recreation center and other recreation centers across the city. It's not a fair budget, and I could certainly see sitting down and cutting $10, $20, $30, $40 million, a $10 million escalator in the courts building. There are other ways to do that or kick the can for another year and reduce the tax rate 1, 2, 3 cents, 4 cents on the mill rate. But in 2021, in November 2021, the citizens of this city voted by 72% margin to support the flood mitigation bond referendum. 72%, $567.5 million. In this year's budget, that equates to $30 million of our expenses. That equates to about 4 cents. So we are absorbing that cost in this budget. So for that reason, I support this. It's not easy. I hear the citizens. We all work very hard for our money, and I'll certainly keep that in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Rosemary?
When you have a budget of this size, not everybody's going to love everything that's in it or that's not in it. There are some things that didn't make it and some things you may not like that are in it. But we have to come together as a group to keep the city running, and that's not always easy. I asked for, what are some of the options for cutting the rate? And no one came forward and said, we should cut out these things. Nothing was recommended. No one made any suggestions to things that should be cut out to bring the rate down. And I think after the public hearing, I started hearing from the council members that the schools, this is the year of education. They did their market salary survey. They found out that they were underpaid. And I don't think anybody here thinks teachers are overpaid. And a big part of this budget this year is for education and to make sure that we keep our good schools, that we keep our teachers, we keep our support staff, and that they can compete, that our city can compete with the other cities across our region. So that was a huge part. And I think that a lot of the members of this council came to recognize that this needs to be the year of education. And the other thing that's really important in this budget is EMS. There's 40 new EMS positions. Our manager last year wanted to put more in, and our wonderful volunteers said, we're going to be able to, we're going to spend a lot of money and go out and do recruiting, and we're going to really try to find the volunteers. So give us another year. And we did. And, you know, it's hard to get people to come to work for money, much less to volunteer. And they did their best. They worked their hardest. But it didn't fill the positions that we needed to make sure our ambulances are running. You know, that's not going to be revenue neutral hiring 40 people to make sure. If when you call rescue, you want to make sure somebody comes because that could be the matter of life and death. So I think there's an opportunity where council members got to do a little bit extra for their, there was some interest money that was one-time money, and it was allocated so that each council member had the opportunity to do a little extra in their district. It was sort of came in near the end. It was interest. And so that's kind of what happened with that. It wouldn't have made, you couldn't have done anything with a tax deduction for that kind of money. So there were road projects cut from this budget. District 9 had three cut from this budget. I can't remember in a long, long time since we had to cut road projects. But we had to do it because this was a very difficult budget. And Worth made a very good point that 72% of the people voted for the stormwater bond. And that's 4.1 cents on the real estate tax. And we absorbed it last year. We kept the 99 cents, and it was recommended for it to be more than that. But we said, no, we're going to, so if we had not done the 4.1 cents, we would be below 96 cents. But we have, 72% was a mandate by the people. So you need to remember that that is in there, too. So it was a very tough budget. I think everybody has worked hard, no matter which side that you believe, you know, that you feel that you're taking your position on. But I think that we need to make sure everybody knows that this is the year of education and EMS, education, and making sure our ambulances are running. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote. Mayor Di?
Yes. I have some comments. Thank you. I appreciate the comments from my fellow council members. My mom grew up in Little Neck, my dad in CTAC. My mom and her sisters integrated King's Grant Elementary School in the early '60s. I attended King's Grant Elementary School. My kindergartner Caleb is now a student at King's Grant Elementary School. I'm a product of our school system. Tonight, in my comments, I want to recognize Mrs. Gimel, Mrs. Watros, my fourth grade teachers, Ellen Hunley, Lynn Haven Middle School, Jay Lane, my coach, my math teacher, the one that would take me home from basketball practice and stop at Burger King because I was hungry. Mrs. Lawson at First Colonial, my marketing teacher. Ed McClendon, Sandy Barry Copeland, my aunt, first African-American scholarship athlete at Virginia Tech who came back to this city and served as a guidance counselor and a teacher. Mr. Carlton Hill, principal. Stephanie Barfield, bus driver, neighbor, her mother, Mrs. Feifield, 30-year bus driver. Aubrey Bray, my classmate, fellow First Colonial graduate who's now teaching in our school system. Lauren Miller, recently married, who throughout COVID came to our house two days a week to coach, to teach my three-year-old to make sure he wouldn't fall behind in preschool. Mrs. Sarah Maybe, now Morrison, Coach Mark Butts. All of these individuals have contributed to my success. And so teachers are important. When I ran for city council last fall, I told people over and over, I'm doing this because I want to help the people in our city in every way that is needed. And I meant that then, and I mean that now. I want to take us back to our retreat. We had goals. The first goal was to establish a strong foundation for effective governance. We said we would listen with respect. We would disagree agreeably. We would be bold, engaged, fully present, that we would be willing to hear from others, especially the new members, that we would be transparent, that we would practice honesty, and we would be attentive to citizen needs, that we would set a sense of clear direction, laying out priorities, laying out priorities so the staff would have clear direction from the body, that we would lean into strengths of individuals, blend personal and professional skills, and that disagreement was not personal, that we would establish comfort levels as a body and sort through the noise and prioritize. My comments tonight are for the approximately 450,000 residents in this city and the 100,000-plus voters that showed up in November. These voters were made up of nurses. There's a shortage in that field. They're underpaid. Teachers, public safety workers. A tornado hit our district last week. As I was touring the district with our governor, I ran into Mike Jordan, a classmate from Lynn Haven Middle School. He's a public safety worker. He works within our city. Business owners, recent college graduates, and retirees. We were elected to make decisions and set the vision for this city. This body is tasked with setting the vision. Elections have consequences. My two primary concerns in this first four months are aligned with both Councilwoman Henley and Councilwoman Wooton. Process and leadership. Process and leadership. Our first budget meetings were not held until the week of March 17th. Those meetings were scheduled with the city manager and the budget director. How many council members raised the issue of tax relief in their meeting? After my meeting that day at 3:23 on the 17th, I reached back out to our city manager and stated very clear, the goal should be to find landing between 4 cents and 7 cents. If you don't believe me, ask the city manager. I got a response. That response shocked me. That response said that asking the staff to go through the exercise of cutting 4 cents would require a significant amount of staff time to figure out what breaks on financial policy, standpoint, bond covenant, et cetera, et cetera. And without the direction of the body, no discussion. And without the direction of the body, no discussion. Four cents, he elaborated, equals roughly 29 or 30 million dollars. 13 to 14 million per the funding policy formula from schools. On April 11th, we had a council meeting. My council, my fellow councilman Michael Berluci was very impassioned, very direct. He couldn't believe that the only options on the table were cutting mental health, body worn cameras. And we agreed that day, go to the tape, it's on Facebook, that the body was giving direction for further options. This never happened. The question for the 450,000 residents, the 100,000 voters that showed up in November that were engaged, why didn't it happen? I didn't call the vice mayor and say, I'm not, I'm no longer interested in tax relief. Whose direction was the city manager taking? I didn't feel like, as a new member, that we were leaning into the strengths and the individuals, that we were listening with respect. The vice mayor takes the lead after the proposed budget is introduced. The vice mayor led private discussions with individual council members. But as a body, one discussion. The next discussion we had as a body was on May 2nd, last week. If you don't believe me, go to the tape. Back to the four cent option, 13 to 14 million from schools, 15 million from city council. In that meeting, it was communicated that a message would get to the school board, that they would have to collaborate with us. I never received a report if the school board actually discussed looking at options to find $15 million out of a $900 million plus budget. We agreed to be respectful, but bold. Last week, on the 2nd, Councilman Schulman quoted, "We don't really have that much margin. A dollar penny reduction in real estate tax on a $250,000 house equals a $25 annual savings." Well, shortly after that comment, one of my constituents reached out, and I'll read what he said. Where can you find a $250,000 house in the city of Virginia Beach? Not reality. It's hundreds of dollars with this new tax rate. This means young first-time homebuyers will have a mortgage that will be hundreds of dollars more. I just look at my son, who makes a decent living as a fireman and can't afford an apartment in Virginia Beach, much less a $250,000 home. I wanted to do further research because we said that in our boldness, we would be realistic. And so I asked for some data. Did you know that in the fiscal year 24, the average residential assessment was $400,700 at that 9.8% rate Councilwoman Henley mentioned? In fiscal year 23, $364,700, 11.29% increase? I wanted to make sure the data was clear, so I said, let's go back a few more years. Fiscal year 2022, date of report, January 21, $329,000. I'm not finding the $250,000 number. Further data, we looked at sales in 2022. We have a Realtor, several Realtors. The average sale price in this city was $512,328 with a count of ballot sales at 8,789. 2021, mean average sale price, $387,862, 11,000 homes. The year of COVID, 2020, mean average sales price, $362,850, 9,648 units. And to be clear, foreclosures, family sales have been excluded. 60% of the new home construction in this city is over $500,000. I got that data as a liaison to the Housing Advisory Board. The school board, along with this council, made designing three new schools a priority. How many teachers would this impact? We voted 8-1, Councilman Schulman, in opposition, to defer the vote for 30 days. Why? Because the new school board had just been elected, and many of the members didn't know what the PPEA stood for. If you don't believe me, ask them. The school board voted the next week to utilize this PPEA process. I asked our city attorney to bring forth some numbers on the municipalities within this state utilizing this PPEA process. I believe we found less than three. Without any discussion publicly, maybe privately, the PPEA agreement was set and put back on the agenda the following week. Now, I called the motion to defer it, not a phone call, and we set a policy that three members or the mayor and one member is needed to put something on the agenda. I never saw that email come through. Without any discussion, no one communicated with me, but we said we were committed to hearing from others, especially the new members. How many council members got a personal call from Steve and Justin Ballard? I know I didn't. $15.4 million to design 30% of three schools. Again, I'm a product of our schools. In my district, we have Thalia, no new renovations. Malibu, slight renovations. King's Grant Elementary School, I believe they received a library 15 or 20 years ago. John B. Die, we didn't tear it down, build a new one, renovation. Cox High School, Trentwood, I toured that school, not in District 8. Great Neck Middle School, beautiful new school. Lynn Haven Middle School, achievable dream addition. If the priority was teacher pay, why not hold off the design until teacher raises were secured? Because the information I received as a liaison to the school modernization committee was that inflation was actually declining over the next few years. But as I heard, members of council said, we just can't kick this can down the road anymore. Again, I have so much respect for Councilman Schulman, but he said there's very little margin. There seems to be plenty of margin when it comes to building schools. Plenty of margin when it comes to Atlantic Park, 60 million over budget. These monies could have been used for tax relief for all teachers and citizens, but it wasn't a priority. Let's reference the CIP highlights from the superintendent's needs estimate. 2000 fiscal year 24 CIP proposed. Princess Anne High School replacement. Construction start date 2024-25. Highly unlikely if we're at 30% of design. Construction complete 2029. CIP number 1-028. Construction start 2028-29. BF Williams Elementary, Bayside, sixth replacement. Construction complete 2031. We're out eight years. CIP 1-029, 2034-35. Bayside High School replacement at an estimated $335 million. No one's answered the question how we're going to pay for it. Construction complete 2039. Would a 12-month delay in design really impact the overall plan? Would the current students that are in these schools with water dripping and mold ever set foot in these new schools? Maybe if they're in kindergarten. My council, my fellow councilman Remick brought up the $10 million escalator. I had a conversation with our city manager, he said, we're going to have to cut the whole roof open, replace these escalators. Well, clearly, there's no margin. Maybe we bring in structural engineers and build a staircase that's nice. The elevators are working. Is the priority the escalator system or teacher pay? Defer the escalator replacement, reallocate the money. The answer was, it's already out to bid. Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson mentioned the 1.5 in interest income is not germane, but if you add 10 million, 1.5 million in interest income, you deduct 2 million from the 15 million in enhancements at Atlantic Park. I've calculated, I'm at 13.5 million. There's your two cents on the city side, but the margins are just too tight. But we're 60 million over budget. I support teachers. I support first responders, emergency personnel, and all the citizens. But I can't support this process. Transparency shouldn't be an option, but rather, it's expected in government. The vice mayor and mayor stated that last year was the year of the city worker. This year will be the year of the teachers in education. My question to this council and to the 450,000 residents, 100,000 of which came out and voted and got engaged, is when is the year of the citizen? When is the year of the business owner? The single parent? The nurse? Because the margins are just not there. When I ran for office, when I campaigned for city council last fall, I told people over and over, I'm doing this because I want to help the people in our city in every way that is needed. I meant that then, and I mean that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jennifer Rouse, do you have any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Rouse, may I have your vote, please?
What's the motion that we're voting on now?
The motion is to approve A and B, the operating, oh, did you?
A, B, and C.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear C. I apologize. So the entire budget?
Okay, yes.
By vote of 8 to 3, you have adopted the budget.
Okay. Okay, we thank you all very much. You know, this was a very challenging budget cycle, as it was last year. But once again, it takes a lot of hard work, and we all thank you for all your input and participation. Thank you.